So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And I'd like to ask if councillors have any items to add to the agenda? I do have one, but I'll put it out to folks first. We'd be looking for unanimous consent on items added to the agenda. No? Okay, so I just have one. It is National Nursing Week. I just wanted to do a mention of that. So could I have consensus to add that?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so with that, could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. Or, okay, I think councillor Sean Sampson and councillor Brent Sampson moving in seconding that. Could I have, or all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Perfect. Thank you. So a review of the minutes from March 8th. Those minutes were circulated in advance and for your review. So if there are no errors or omissions that you've noted, I have a motion to approve those minutes, please. Deputy Warden? Thank you. Could I have a seconder on that?
I'll second that motion.
Councillor Sean Sampson, thank you so much. So all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thanks again. So that brings us to the fun part. So welcome. Jim Mustard is with us this evening to give a presentation on Raising the Villages. And I'm not going to pronounce the next part. So I'm going to leave that in your capable hands, Jim. And welcome. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Warden and Deputy Warden and the three Sampson councillors. That's great. And congratulations, everyone, on your election and getting in. I know it's been a while since that occurred, but still, I recognize the commitment after 10 years on Inverness Council, what it means and the importance of the role. So, and I, and it's significant that you make time for communities to, to share this opportunity, to try and learn what's going on in our community. So I appreciate it. So am I going to share my screen? Is that how I'm going to work here? Yvonne?
Yeah, Jim, I'm going to just give you, I'm going to give you co-hosts, so you can do that.
Okay, perfect.
You should be good now.
Okay. Okay. We're all set? My timer's on, 15 minutes, let's go. Is it 15 minutes? Just thumbs up on that, I think it's 15 minutes.
Yes, that's right. Yes.
So, okay, so I've timed myself. I should be able to do it in 13. So I'm going to go fast, but this is a reference piece. I'm just introducing this. There's lots of work that's gone on behind this. So Raising the Villages, Mauiomi, Jit, Michiwachik, which translates to gathering for our children. So just to recognize that we're located in Mi'kmaqie, the unceded territory of Mi'kmaq people. And through Raising the Villages, Mauiomi, Jit, Michiwachik, we are weaving back together our lives from our infants to elders and from across all cultures to deepen our respect, our respect and understanding of each other. So it's interesting, I'm just going to frame up why Raising the Villages was initiated and why it's important. So you may remember the Ivyney Commission, which was, which was formed by the Liberal Government and Ray Ivyney, who was at the time the president of Acadia, and John Bragg, Blueberry John, who was a fairly successful, very successful businessman. And another group of four others went and looked at the Nova Scotia economy and what were the issues there. And they came up with a very compelling and comprehensive look at what was holding Nova Scotia back. From that, the government created the One Nova Scotia Coalition, which included the three leaders of the, of the major parties, the NDP, the Conservatives and Liberals, and leaders from across all the sectors. One leader from health, but the rest of the sectors were in their education business. And it's interesting, they came up with a playbook. And surprisingly enough, after they took a full year of examining all the data and what was going on, they came up with a list of priorities. And the number one priority was the earlier starting strong. Because the evidence has been there for 20 years that if you invest in the early years, you get competent societies that can contribute back to their economy and their communities. And it's been proven over and over again in countries that have invested in the early years. And Nova Scotia used to do this in-house. We've fallen behind, but every house had a grandmother, an extended family, a nurturing economy. It was all in-house. When I came here 40 years ago, there was no house I couldn't go into where there wasn't a robust family there helping to support each other and raise their children. And that's all changed in the last 40 years. And out of that, the One Nova Scotia Coalition's recommendations, under 1.3, they said, "We want to see collective impact projects designed to support and understand, encourage the welcoming of Nova Scotians' children." And they wanted us to look at what engaging, by engaging parents and families to develop a notion of what welcoming is. They wanted us to build pilots. And they want us to follow some examples set by First Nations. Because still in the First Nations, in the Mi'kmaq culture, the narrative is about our elders and our infants are included in the community. It's not a perfect model anywhere, but they still hold the elder as important and the infant as a wise teacher. So we started in 2016 at the Shannon Studio. We met with over 40 leaders. We said, "Is this the time to start this?" And everyone agreed it was. In 2017, we did, researched over 600 individuals and organizations to find out what's working, what was needed. And it's interesting, it was a mirror of the same thing. What was working is what was needed more of. So if it was a two-hour program in St Peters for young families, they needed more of it. If it was a food program in a community, they needed more of it. So it wasn't that things weren't working in a community, but it wasn't enough. So we worked in 2018, 2019 and 2020 to continue this work from my role as municipal councillor. And in 2021, I got fired from my job, of course, which was okay with me. And that's the way the public wants it sometimes. And so I shifted over my, my work and looked at setting up a co-op. And we did a number of meetings, of which the Warden sat in on a couple, to just look if this was the time to set up a co-op and that structure could help to effectively carry on the work. So why the early years is the number one priority? Well, the earlier starts early, before pre-primary, before childcare. And it sets life course trajectories for our health, physical, mental, our learning and behaviour. The most amazing story about human beings is you're born with 100 billion neurons. And in a healthy nurturing environment, they form a trillion connections by the time they're three years old. A trillion connections, that's more than all the stars I can see up above St Peters and Airshack. And the idea that it starts early has been documented after research after research, where we've got, it doesn't matter if it's vision, hearing, emotional control, language, habitual ways of responding, symbolism, numeracy, peer social skills, all of them peak before you start pre-primary. And many of them peak before you'd enter childcare at one year old. So what does that mean? It means we've got to look at what the health imperative of not doing this. If we don't get ahead of this, we find that many, many complications show up at the first decade when you enter school, through mental health issues, violence, allergies, asthma, ADHD, to longitudinal problems in early death. And so we know that this has all been tracked, the evidence is all there. The health imperative is there, the economic imperative. This was a Nobel laureate from Chicago, who was looking at the economy and came up with this idea that if we looked at where the best investment was in human development, it was before the childcare started. It was $8 returned to one. And he examined every study that would ever have been done. And then when you look at, after you started school, the return is less than a dollar. So you're getting, for every dollar you're getting a return on, you have to put in more than a dollar. And yet, we spend way more time and energy downstream trying to fix the issues that should have been invested up early. So here's the social imperative. Going back to this idea that in Richmond County, the same as Inverness and Victoria County and rural Cape Breton, and in our towns and communities, there used to be a connection for the infant from the beginning of an extended family. So if we're looking at creating something special, we look at these welcoming spaces to connect and belong from conception, so the prenatal period, and make it seamless so that that center is always open, so that you can have the doulas, the birth coach, the midwives, the pediatricians, the nutritional support can surround everyone from the beginning. And you can have all the services, the pediatricians, the early intervention, that are all out there, coming in a coordinated center to meet the needs of families that are always looking for where those services are. And as we go through the continuum, from a toddler right through if it's a home-based, you know, family that just wants to get out once in a while, or it's families that need a center all the time, it's optional. But you'd find that most of the time, families want to be together. And it would lead right into the pre-primary program, where you'd have the opportunity to seamlessly connect to a school and, and reduce the vulnerabilities upstream. So seeing a one-stop shop for everything we need as a coordinated center, and most of the things are already in our community, they're just not available because they're hard to find. So if we look at this upstream investment, we're reminded that the infant is a teacher. And it's, we're there to provide the space for them to teach us. That's a First Nations focus. And so we create the welcoming spaces. We can reduce childhood poverty at the source. And in Cape Breton Island, it's about 24% of children are experiencing poverty. So rather than try and find the individual family, we can create a center that, that accepts everybody and treats them with dignity to provide what they need. You can create universal access to all the services and programs in one place, coordinated so that everybody can find what they need in the services and programs. You can reduce mental health, crime, low literacy, addictions and employability upstream. Connect to transit, local food, housing. Strengthen the Acadian culture. Strengthen the Gaelic culture. Strengthen the Mi'kmaq culture and the newcomers' culture by creating a center that's language-rich. And support business rent is so that families that need to work have the support they need. So our young families that move into our community are there, are able to get what they need all the time. So the Raising the Villages Cooperative was formed and it just launched three weeks ago. We had our first board meeting tonight. And it's a multi-stakeholder co-op, which is an interesting co-op. It's structured to support the development of health initiatives in communities. So the idea that everyone can become a member of this co-op so that we can all work to create welcoming communities for our youngest citizens, that includes what we need in our communities. And they could be specific to what our communities need, whether that's in Lordways or St Peters or Airshack or Lewistale. This could become a process that really tailors what we need in our communities. So I need to keep going here, there. And the objectives of the co-op, I'm not going to go through them, but it's like raising awareness of the early years, help facilitating welcoming community spaces. So being a facilitator, provide networking and communication across the region, share with what's learning across the region. And one thing I'm going to focus on a little bit right now is something called the EDI. So it's data that's available to us as communities to help shape and inform our journey to create more welcoming communities and reduce vulnerabilities. So the dream would be, and you can see I've only covered on this map, Richmond County, Victoria County, Inverness and Port Hoxbury. So at the moment, Victoria County has, has made a $10,000 contribution in their budget to Raising the Villages this year. Inverness County has been requested the same amount, Port Hoxbury 3,000, and we're asking Richmond for five. We're working with the First Nations community. The United Way has put in 10,000 this year to launch the co-op. But we really want to see a network of centers across the whole island at some point. But we're focused on the island that has the same background. Rural communities have very rich cultures, have distances between them that need to be figured out how we get there. And, and that's the dream in the next few years, that we create a network of them. So here's the EDI. The Early Development Instrument was created in McMaster University, and it's now used across the whole of Canada to measure how well our children are doing at the school entry point. And it points upstream to what's missing, not what we need to do at the school system to, to moderate this. So it's a questionnaire completed by the primary teacher. It's 107 questions. They do it after they've been with the class for three months. It measures the developmental trends in the children. It does not diagnose individual children or evaluate a teacher's school's performance. And we've done it four waves of it in Nova Scotia to date. So social, emotional, physical health and wellbeing and cognitive skills are the three broad areas. How well we do with our peers, how well we're doing in our, in our cognitive abilities and how well we're doing physically in development. And it, it's, the data does not include children with identified special needs. So that percentage isn't in there. And it looks at vulnerable children who are without additional support will likely experience future challenges in school, going back to what I showed you and the health outcomes that are going to show up in terms of vulnerabilities. Teenage pregnancies, failure in school rates, ADHD. And it points upstream to what communities really need to do. So in Richmond County, you're the yellow bars. And this is the number, percentage of vulnerable children cognitively, emotionally, socially, emotionally and physically. As you can see, Richmond County is substantially higher than the whole straight region. And it's substantially higher than the provincial average. Now, this is not a condemnation of families. This is a directional pointing to our communities that we can respond and support families. Because traditionally, families, mothers always were surrounded by others. So once again, I'm not going here to say, "Oh, families aren't doing a good job." Families are doing what they can, but we can respond differently to reduce our vulnerabilities. And when you look at us compared to Richmond County, compared to, once again, straight regional and the province, we have 40% of our children entering the school system vulnerable socially, emotionally, cognitively and physically together. They're in the lowest 10 percentile of the province. 40% of your children entering your school are in the lowest 10 percentile of the province. It's a call to action. It's not a thing that say, "We've got to get those bad parents doing things." We've got to support all families here universally to create welcoming spaces that start prenatally because it happens early, like I said, 100 billion neurons, trillion connections by the time they're three is a community's ability to respond. So is there evidence of other regions that have succeeded at this? Are there other regions in Canada that have succeeded in reducing vulnerability? The arrow here is pointing to a place called Revelstoke in BC, where the superintendent of schools in the year 2000 was informed of the importance of the early years. And they've been measuring this in BC since 2000. And so they started working together as a community. And they called everyone together, municipal leaders, business leaders, all the early years people. And they started to work together, a community of 7,000 people, which isn't much bigger, I mean, much smaller than Richmond County. And they started working together. And what's amazing is the birth rate went from 40 to over 100 a year in the past 14 years by creating more welcoming and supported communities for the youngest citizens. And there's their numbers. In the first wave, they dropped it to 12% in 2004, after four years of working together. Four years of creating connective programs, creating more welcoming spaces for families. They took it down to 7% in 2007 and they've kept it at 10% in three waves. The only jurisdiction in BC, because they worked together as leaders in their community to understand the importance of this. While the provincial average is at 32%, one in three, one in three children, they've reduced it one in 10. That's a success story. And the evidence that they said, the parents, number one thing, as they said, the ability to break down the isolation some parents feel in our community has made the biggest difference. If the pandemic hasn't done, has done one thing, it's shown that the isolation is a real detriment to all our health. All our health. And the participation of families, the young children, you say, "Well, maybe not all families will participate in this." It's so welcoming to everyone. 95% of families now participate in these programs. 95%. So who's involved? Raising the Villages right now has a board with inclusive family doctor, a straight regional center for education staff, early childhood educators, has a Mi'kmaq representative, representatives Cape Breton Partnership, Public Health, municipalities, MLAs, MPs. I think this is our opportunity to put Cape Breton, Unamagui on the map as one of the most welcoming places for our youngest citizens, starting with them, including everyone, by creating a space in each community that welcomes us and provides the needs we have as citizens that traditionally used to be in the home and now needs to be having a coordinated space in Airshack, Lordways, in St Peters, in Baudelaire Deck and Lordways. I don't know all the places, but anyways, the idea is, this is our opportunity. And I'm committed, and I've been crazy committed to this. I've been a foster parent for 25 years. And then being a foster parent, I'll tell you one story. I thought I could make a difference in, in, in the lives of these young people. And I'm not saying we didn't make a difference in the lives of these young people, but it's been a consistent work to get them in the same position as the birth children we had because of that early development that the parents weren't able to get the supports. And that has shown me and humbled me that we need to work so that every family feels support from the beginning, knows of the importance of what they're doing. Because it just doesn't work later on. And I, you know, thought I was just able to give the love that was needed. And it takes so much more. You need to have the birth family supported and loved the same as you can offer love to your own children. So that's my story. I'll stop sharing. I'll stop sharing. Did I do it?
Almost.
Oh, not really, not really.
Almost. Thanks, Jim. That, that's a really, really great information. I'm, I know we are a little running over time, but I would like to kind of offer questions to a few folks, if, if councillors have questions for Jim. I guess, I, sorry, go ahead, councillor Sampson.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, like, this, this, this investment you're seeking, that would be supporting ongoing programs or to add to, to what's already there, would it? Or just?
So councillor, this would help us build the capacity in Richmond County. So create the network in Richmond County. You've got, you know, you've got organizations like the Chapewa Island Daycare, the Richmond County Early Childhood Education Association. So we would start working with your organizations and include the municipal council and, and business community to understand the importance of this, so that we can actually change the policy at the provincial level to support our communities. So it's going to be a longer-term commitment, but I think right now is let's get the ball rolling. And if we can get a model up and going in one of the communities in the next year, that gets us an example of what this is that we can all learn from, then that would be the goal. And right now, we have a representative from Richmond County on the board, Normie Jean-McPhee. So I think we're well represented to have a voice. But I would also say that part of the advisory capacity would be our municipal councillors, because they know their communities well. And we would just, we would be working in partnership with everyone through the process.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions from council? Councillor Melanie Sampson?
Just wondering, Jim, are there other organizations similar to this throughout the rest of the province?
Councillor, there's not really any organization, like there's childcare associations, there's early childhood educator associations, but nothing that really looks at the healthy development of children, which is really talking about that maternal health and how that goes into early learning. And I think what's unique about this is that we have an opportunity to create that, that space that we all feel comfortable in, and, and it feels welcoming because it's safe. And it does look at the health of the mother, the health of the family, the health of the extended family in ways that feel like the door's open and I'm in there. Versus you separate families, childcare, the pre-primary, all about getting ready for school. But we're really talking about that early development, which isn't really represented across the province yet as a capacity piece.
Great, thanks.
So Jim, I just have, oh, sorry, I just have one short one. So you indicated the Baudelaire Deck. Is there any talks, like, are you currently, I guess, with talks with anybody from Baudelaire Deck? Or talks with anybody like from the French Acadian side? I guess it's a multicultural setup. So is there anybody in place on, you know, on both sides that?
Yes, so Deputy Warden, we've reached out to both the Chapewa Island Daycare and the Centre de la Pecasse. With our, we have a person who's done communication and network development. So we've reached out in the last month to connect and start to create that, that, that opportunity to learn more of what's going on and see how we can actually build on the successes of those organizations. So honestly, that's a part of the process that we've been in. Inverness County paid for the one-paid staff last year by themselves while I was still councillor, who was to head the coordination and communication, like that key component of building the network. So we really haven't been like heavy on staff. We've had one person working part-time to get to this point. And we still see, as councillor Sampson asked, what's the money for? Is to continue that work. We've got a federal grant in for three years funding right now. And if we're successful with that, we'd have a coordinator and a communication director for three years. So we've done a fair amount of legwork to try and get the funding in place. But I respect there's a lot more work to be done to build the network.
Okay, well, thank you, Jim. I'm going to cut us off there, just because I'm keeping an eye on our clock. That was an extremely well-done presentation. I definitely learn a lot every time I listen to you present on this topic. So thank you for joining us. It's much appreciated. If we have any follow-up questions, we know where to find you. We have your contact information and yeah, so thank you again.
Thanks so much, Warden, Deputy Warden and council and staff. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Okay, so I'm going to move us on to the next section of our agenda. We did have a second presentation scheduled. Rural Cape Breton Housing Enterprises, Damian McGinnis was planning to be with us this evening, but he had to cancel on short notice due to some unexpected circumstances that had come up. So I'll move us on to the next item, which is a notice of motion to appeal. So this is essentially a notice of motion to repeal internal procedures regarding the sewer service charge appeals policy. And really, it's, you know, this is on the agenda because we've already got that detail in our amended bylaw as per our, you know, previous discussions on the sewer, on the sewer bylaws. So this is really just to remove duplication. At this point, I'd be seeking a motion to give notice to repeal the internal procedures sewer service charge appeals policy.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, or notice a motion to repeal the internal procedures of the sewer service charge.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Warden, could I have a seconder?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Councillor Sean Sampson, any discussion on that? Any questions from councillors?
Question.
Okay, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, is related to the Cape Breton Local Immigration Partnership, community consultations and the results of that. I'm just seeing, I'm looking at our agenda here and it doesn't look to be an updated agenda. There's a piece missing on the shared screen. The, the copy that I have includes the Maui Donage Multicultural Festival. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, Yvonne. Okay, so the Cape Breton Local Immigration Partnership, just had a few notes I wanted to mention on that. So this, the Local Immigration Partnership was launched in 2017 and its goal was to build a collaborative approach to improving newcomer settlement outcomes in Cape Breton and Unamagui. So it's led by an advisory council of 30 member organizations, including councillor Melanie Sampson on behalf of Richmond County and myself in my other role as NSCC representative. And the CBLIP, sorry, I call it the LIP. It's the Local Immigration Partnership. It has a focus on four key priority areas. So it's about fostering welcoming communities, raising public awareness, improving coordination and supporting community-based research and planning. So they conduct biennial community consultations to make sure that they better understand community trends and priorities related to immigration and settlement. And they've just released their latest report on that research. And I just thought it appropriate to mention that, you know, there were a couple of things that stood out from the results of the report. When newcomers were asked about their most significant challenges in settling, 51% included finding or maintaining work in their response, which is no surprise. But the next most common challenge, each identified by 35% of respondents, were making friends and maintaining healthy relationships and finding affordable housing. So overall, the satisfaction of newcomers with services available in Cape Breton and Unamagui was relatively high, though many areas for improvement were described. Lower satisfaction was found with the employment and education-related services, with only 53% providing a positive rating. And in contrast, though, 86% of newcomers who had used settlement and language services gave a positive rating regarding their experience. So I think it's just important for us to understand, you know, as a community that's interested in welcoming newcomers to our region, how can we help? You know, when asked what helped them the most while settling in, newcomers answered their top five were making friends, exploring the island, finding work, having family support and connection with others and with a shared background or language. So, you know, don't underestimate the power of being good neighbour. And I just think that's food for thought as we continue to work on ways to welcome newcomers. I want to congratulate the Cape Breton Local Immigration Partnership for their work on that research. I'd like to hand it over to councillor Melanie Sampson as representative of the LIP for Richmond County.
Thanks, Warden. I just wanted to- I just wanted to send out a special, a special thank you and just a recognition to, you know, the St. Peter's Welcome Group. So they've been, they've been formed since a while. And if you look on the Welcome Network webpage, you will see some information on that group. Also want to send out a bit of a recognition to the new chapter that started, the Lewesdale chapter, the three, four, five exchange chapter, I guess. And those folks are really, you know, both the St. Peter's group and the Lewesdale group, among others across Cape Breton, looking to support newcomer recognition and just the idea of being a good neighbor. So as our warden has has mentioned, that's very important to welcoming newcomers to the area to make them feel welcome is is to actually be that good neighbor to them. So I think it's also important to mention that there's always room for more groups to come on board. And certainly, I would encourage anyone who may be interested in starting a new group to reach out to either Warden Marmarcat or to myself as members of the Cape Breton LIP, as as the warden has said. So to the Local Immigration Partnership. In fact, it was funny, I was chatting with the new Lewesdale Welcome Chapter Chairperson, Jacqueline Landry, and she said, what, what is the LIP? What does that even mean? Which, of course, we just use acronym, so we don't necessarily always think about those. But so just encouraging you, you know, for folks who, you know, perhaps in the Almudan area or out in the Evanston, Whiteside or Point Temple area, if you're interested in, you know, starting a chapter, certainly reach out, like I said, to Warden Marmarcat or myself, and we'd be happy to get you in contact with the, with the folks at the, at the LIP.
Definitely, you know, and I guess I should, I'd be amiss in mentioning that, you know, this is just one of the many initiatives that's, that are led by the Cape Breton Partnership on our behalf. So thank you to them for their effort on this. And any other comments or questions for councillors?
If I can get to the mute button, no. It was, yeah, no, it was just really informative going through that. There was, there was a lot to digest there, not that I got through all of it, but I, yeah. There, there, there were some things on there that it was, you know, obviously disappointing that you'd like to see some of these numbers higher, that people would have better outcomes. But I mean, I guess that just gives us something to strive for. And and I think it'd be great, the the more people that that see the results of this study. And it just gives people something to think about, and then maybe they will think about it next time we, you know, come across somebody new with the area and just ways we can make it more welcoming for them.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. So if there's any other comments? Okay, so hearing none, I'll move us on to the next item on the agenda. And this was related to the Maui Donage Multicultural Festival. East of the Causeway had put in a request to use the arena for a kind of a large-ish event, which would be, I think, scheduled for the end of June. But they have withdrawn their request, obviously, in the face of the rising COVID numbers and public restrictions. It's incredible how quickly things can change, so. So that item can be, I guess, at this point, just taken off the plates of staff. And I don't think we need a motion to that affect CAO, or just wanted to bring that up for mention at, at this meeting, since it had come up publicly in the past. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is correspondence for information purposes. And it is regarding a memo from the Eastern District Planning Commission regarding 443 Black River Road, Grand Dance, Richmond County. And you will have seen in your, I guess, in your packages, your meeting packages, the the full text of the memo. The order is underway for that property. And this is really just an information piece. So unless councillors have any specific questions or concerns, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Okay. So hearing none, I'll move us on. And the next item on the agenda is a review of checks issued for April 2021. And again, this information is presented for your review. So if there are no questions, we can move on, but I will open it for questions if people have questions about the checks, the list of checks. Okay, councillors are quiet this evening. This could be a record breaking moment. All right. Okay, so then items added to the agenda and was National Nursing Week. So I just wanted to do a special mention that May 10th to 16th is National Nursing Nursing Week in Canada. The National Nursing Week's annual celebrations take place from the Monday to the Sunday of the same week as Florence Nightingale's birthday on May 12th. So that's something I learned this year. This, this theme, the theme this year is hashtag, we answer the call. And it was developed by the Canadian Nurses Association to showcase the many roles that nurses play in a patient's healthcare journey. The pandemic brought to light the courage and commitment that nurses work under every day and showed the important role that they play in the community. So I just wanted to take this moment to thank them for all they do and to open, open that up for comment by councillors, if you so choose.
Yeah, for me, Warden Marmarcat, I will echo your, your comments. And, and, you know, when it comes to healthcare professionals and nurses, hats off to all of them. Thank them for their service and thank them for everything they do for our healthcare. Yeah, just great, great professionals. And we have some young nurses in our community, and we've had one recently graduated and moved home. So that's exciting. And yeah, again, I commend all of them and thank them for your, your service.
Okay, thank you, councillor Sean Sampson. Are there any other comments?
If I could, Warden?
Absolutely.
Thanks. So those of you who know me, know that my mom was a nurse for 30 plus years. And, you know, just being a daughter of a nurse, I can tell you just how hard they work. And I can tell you just how much they care and just all that they give to their profession every single day. And so, you know, seeing it from the other side, I guess, what I would, what I would like to say is, you know, you know, especially during this pandemic, there's been a lot of attention brought to our healthcare professionals and to lots of others who have been our essential workers throughout the pandemic. And so, you know, this week we celebrate nurses. But I think we should celebrate them and all the other essential workers every day. And I think we've been doing a better job of that. And I, that's probably one of the positive perks that we've had through the pandemic is that we've come to really appreciate those people, like nurses, who give their all every day. And so just a special thank you from me.
Well said. Thank you, councillor Melanie Sampson. Councillor Brent Sampson, did you have something you wanted to add? Sorry, I thought I saw your.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah, hard to follow that. Yeah, no, it's, you know what, the, the importance nurses play can't be understated. There's no, there's no way around it. And just hopefully going forward that, you know, we remember this when, when all the pandemic stuff is hopefully settled down. It's, it's been a good reminder as to how much we rely on them through this last year, year and a half, you know.
Absolutely. Okay, any further comments then?
I think the only thing I would add is that, you know, respect. I think we have to remember that, you know, with this virus out there and with it going on. People, I guess it's, people are, have fear, and that's understandable. But I think at the same time, you'd have to have respect and show a little bit of compassion. Really, we got to remember where our grassroots come from. And we've had lots of pandemics in the past. And again, you know, proceed with, have compassion for the people next to you.
Yeah, it feels like we're on our millionth wave. I know, it's, it's been a difficult year, year plus now, so. Okay, thank you, Deputy Warden. So I think if there's no further comments, then I'll move us on to our 15 minute question period. And just a reminder for folks on the call. So we do have 15 minutes on this question period. I think in the description, it may have said 10, but it is a 15 minute question period. So you can ask your question by phone. So if you're joining us by phone, or you can use the Zoom chat. If those options aren't working for you, then you can use the raise your hand function or un unmute to ask if you could ask a question. It's just, we're trying to make sure that we don't have a bunch of voices kind of speaking over each other all at once, if there's more than one question. So at this point, I'll open it for questions. Okay, so it's a quiet this evening then, all right. Okay, so Yvonne, just I wanted to double check with you. There's no questions coming through the chat or anything that I might be missing?
No, I have nothing here.
Okay. All right. So I guess we'll call the question period at a close then. If there's no questions, I won't keep you for 15 minutes of silence, although I'm sure we could all use a little rest, even though it's only Monday, but and I think, oh, hello?
Yes, Robbie Fugere in Penderdaw.
Hi, Robbie.
I have a question if it's, if it's, if it's all right to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, would it be possible to put the link to the Zoom meetings on the homepage of the municipality next to the notice of meeting date and time? The last number of meetings I've had a challenge trying to find the link. So I'm wondering if it would be possible to put that link on the homepage next to the meeting, to the notice of meeting? Because I found, I find that quite easily. And I'm wondering if that would be possible. So thank you very much for considering that.
Okay, thanks, Robbie. That's a, that's a great question. I guess the easy answer is that, that's, you know, we do have the ability to edit the website, so that type of thing is possible. I understand when it gets published on Facebook and then sometimes gets pushed down in the list of all the things we have going on, right? So we'll definitely take that under consideration. Thank you, Robbie. Okay. Any other questions? I'm never sure what's the appropriate amount of time to wait, but I know muting and unmuting, it's even a year later, I'm still tripping over myself getting that done quickly, so.
Maybe we need some Alex Trebek music or something.
Yeah, we do. We need some, yeah, some Jeopardy tunes. But I'm not hearing any further questions. And I, I, from what I can see in the chat, I don't see anything. So at this point, I'll move us to the next item on the agenda, which is our in camera session, but we don't have one required this evening. So I'll move, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wow.
I'm so surprised, 7:47, but I will make that motion.
Everybody's arguing to see who's gonna make the motion. I think I heard councillor Melanie Sampson. Do I have a secondary?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.